So welcome to Woodbury to your village board meeting, June 8, 2023. Well, everyone, please rise and pledge allegiance to our fellow members, longtime member and contributor to this community, your representative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Can you hear me? Yes, we colored board meeting, trustees today. We have the end cup. All right, before we go any further, let me begin by introducing your village board, starting with our end trustee, Chris Graziano. Next to him is trustee Dick Ferraris. Next to him is trustee Sue Suriello. Deputy Mayor Tyler Bjork is on special assignment. Next to me is the village clerk, Desiree Cottin. Joining us is Deputy Clerk Jessica McClellan and our attorney, Kelly Norton, audit worker, and I am the mayor, Major Jack Mazzu. So, before we go any further, I have a special presentation tonight. So, two years ago, two years ago, two years ago, Jackie Hernandez came up, or Councilwoman Jackie Hernandez, came up with the idea to add a sensory park to Woodbury, and it was a phenomenal idea. And under Supervisor Burke, he has decided to expand that even further, going into phase two. So at this time, I'd like to call up the town supervisor, Thomas Burke, to the podium. Jackie, you can go with him. Bobby, you can go with him also in the parks chair. You're comfortable. That's all you can do. It's just hard to talk. Maria, you must be the gentleman.
Yeah, very good.
Speak loudly.
Okay, we will. Well, first of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone and thank you for inviting us. This is just a great night for us that we were able to come here and speak on behalf of what's being done right now, what we're excited to say is gonna happen with the sensory park. Or like to thank the village. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we had Deputy Mayor Bjork, and we had the mayor, Andrew Jack Mazzu, who attended the meeting with us. We had a great presentation from one of the ladies in the supervisor's office, Clara Rivera, and we really brought everything out that we wanted to do and what our ideas were and how we wanted to hopefully expand. And the village, what they're doing here with us tonight is just fantastic. And I want to, I have a few other things to say, but I'd like to ask Jackie to talk specifically to the sensory park first. It's where we get a little bit of an idea, that people get a idea, not know what really Jackie had started and what she's been working, what she had worked on when she was one of our council members, and she's even our deputy supervisor.
Thank you so much, village board, for inviting me here. I'm excited to kind of be in this space again. I said before, coming here at seven o'clock at night, I don't miss those late nights. But I definitely miss the initiatives and the community activism that usually will go on in our community. So the sensory park was one of my final projects while I was on the town board for Woodbury. And that project was special to me because over the four years that I was in office, I saw a lot of families that were moving into our community, who were struggling with our parks. And the specific issue they had with our parks was that children with special needs, spectrum autism, or anything affiliated with that, they had trouble taking their children to the open areas because many times the children would run off into areas that might be dangerous. Or maybe when they were playing, other children that were playing in groups, it may have bothered them. And so many families who had children with special needs really felt like outsiders in our community. And so what we wanted to do is create a space, because we have beautiful parkland, to create a space that would be all inclusive and would meet the needs of these families. Some of the concerns that I received was that, you know, my child's a runner. And so when we have an open space, they run, and I don't want to get to play and relax with them in the parks because they run in the open space. And so what we found was a parcel of land that used to be, it was a volapitated tennis court. And there was no intention to revive it. So I said, you know what, it's already fenced in, it would minimize costs. And then maybe we can use this space to have an enclosed space where parents can kind of lock the gate and say, they're safe, right? And they can play in this area. And we were really fortunate at that time that we were able to find somebody to get it started. And so when we designed it, we didn't have enough money to fully design it. But what my thought was, when I sat with the judge of representatives, was to design it in such a way that future boards could continue to add to the park. And so my wish as I left office to the board that was seated was that they don't forget the sensory park and to every year, you know, maybe add something new to it so that it would continue to grow and continue to meet the needs of all our children. So I am very happy that Tom helped his promise and that the village is also contributing to that. Because again, you know, that's what we want to see in our community, is that both boards are working together to meet the needs of our community and to, of course, meet those special needs that we have, that the sensory park needs. So, thank you. I'm very happy to be here and thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
We also have with us Martha Lopez, who is on the town parks committee. So she's very involved. As soon as she became a member of the committee, she's been very involved in all of our parks and whatever we, all that we do. So, Martha, where did you work?
What she said.
So.
Martha Lopez was at Ross for work?
So I just have a couple more things I'd like to say. We're here for the sensory park. Everything that Jackie is saying there is wonderful. But I just want to personally recognize Chris, Dick, Sue, Tara, who's not here, and Mayor Andrew. Because as a town and a village, we are showing and we are working together. People don't know what goes on behind the scenes a lot. But just an example of it is tonight. Prior to that, people also know that what we're doing, all the help that we've been working together as far as the bridge, the bridge road, what was done with the pool and the courthouse, what's being done with the building that you just purchased.
Even the work downstairs, your building and grounds for the firemen downstairs, fire personnel, a lot of the work was done by Bobby Blair and Joey's department. They came in, he sent in a crew of guys, they painted downstairs, repaired walls. It was extensive, the amount of work that they did.
What it is, though, is also, so that the community also hears it, when you really combine what the town departments do versus the village offices do, departments, there's really no comparison because the highway department and the building department, it's just tremendous. So we're always just trying to chase and just do whatever we can to help out. So even though you mentioned it tonight, thank you, but it's really is special. And I know the villages are very aware of what their departments are doing. So we're moving forward now with the sensory park and like I said, these other bridges and everything else together. So thank you again for having us tonight, and we're really, really excited.
Well, I want to say on behalf of the board how excited we were because your predecessor really didn't allow us to be involved with the project and we had wanted to be. So we've been collecting these parkland fees as a way to possibly purchase open space, preserve open space. And then this opportunity came up. So, and it is an opportunity to expand on something that was a phenomenal idea. It just adds to our park system with the pool and the rez and the beautiful grounds everywhere. And now we have this sensory park, you have a pickleball court. So this is, it's gonna be great for all. And I'm happy that Bernie Davis is involved because in January, we kind of appointed her for this, and she's been working with your library. I don't know about board, but she's been working with Sarah Johnson for some programs. I think that's part of the summer reading program that they're going to be doing. So, without further ado, without further ado, on behalf of the village of Woodbury, we thank James Stufus for the idea. I would like to present to you Mr. Supervisor this check for a hundred grand. Do not try to cash this because you'll lose your job. A real check is coming your way, so. Come here. Bring, bring the board on in.
Everyone get in.
Martha getting in.
Okay.
They're the tea.
All right. I'm just talking for a minute.
Yes, just.
Dick? Perfect. Now you're all coordinated. Beautiful, everyone? Oh, I got four shots. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. The village treasurer could let you know how the actual check is.
He needs to do an account transfer, this.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I think that Jackie, if you see her, you know, we could speak to the fact that two years ago, when we did start this project with the sensory park, the funding that we had used was not too much more than what that is. So I mean, what the village has done now is, it's just incredible. So we can't thank you enough.
Well, Clara did, Clara did a fantastic job putting the entire pamphlet together. We saw the wish list. I think that it covers all bases. And I think that residents, the parents of all kids should be excited of what's coming. I think that Bernie brought up some good ideas about how you want those on the spectrum, those other, you want them to intermix. And I think that this park is going to help bridge a gap between the two kids. So I think it's planned.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. The last thing I'd like to say, Mayor, I'd just like to tell you that on top of your outstanding board and everyone, you have a brave village clerk. Outstanding. So you're so lucky to have him.
At least four of us would agree.
Four.
Who's the one that doesn't? I think it's Rick D'Amico.
We all love that, don't we?
Thank you very much.
It's like Des Moines.
So everybody knows, we've got an ongoing problem on Route 6 where emergency vehicles cannot communicate down below. So Senator Stufus has set up a joint meeting between our board and town supervisor and the emergency services to kind of address that. And as well, I think you've got a date on the DMV coming back to Woodbury.
As it stands right now, July 18th. We need a 50M for the DMV in Mobile unit because when you set it up, it was a couple of weeks ago, you wanted it. It was on 105. What we did, decided to do, we have to keep it there. So it's in the public eye rather than the back. We're gonna, on the town, we're gonna purchase a generator. And this way we can, NK will, this way we can leave the truck in the front by 105. And we'll have that generator to be able to service.
Very good.
So we'll be here in July again. And dates will be given after the vote. But that was, that's good.
That was good. I mean, take full advantage of it because they really, they could do anything on that mobile DMV.
They told us that Woodbury's on their schedule. They go around the entire community of county, and so we'll stay on it.
Sounds good.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you again.
Coming on. All right. Public comments on agenda items only. So you all have copy of the agenda that is at front of the room? If anyone wishes to speak on agenda items only, now's your time. Only once, or twice. Okay. On to our only public hearing tonight. A moratorium waiver request for eight Laurel Lane. Public hearing is being held and it's a public comment under the test permit for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022. Continuing the moratorium on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals for property located in eight Laurel Lane. A notice was printed in the Times-Tower Record on June 1, 2023, and no written comments were received. Introduce yourself.
John Victor Sealy, the engineer for the applicants. We did submit a request for the waiver from the moratorium. Our understanding, if there is a 220 gallon per day or less increase in the proposed water usage, that waiver is applicable. So what we've done is compiled usage of water data from two existing facilities which operate the same program. There is one facility which has been in operation for six months, which is the exact program which will be moving into this facility. There's another which is operated by the same group, provides the same services, but it is at a different location in its own permanent facility. So we went through the water records for the six months available for the operation that will be moving into this location, as well as twelve months worth of data for the existing similar facility. Based on those, we came up with a proposed water usage of approximately 236 gallons per day maximum, or 60 occupants. If you compare that to the standards set by the DEC, the DEC's numbers for the same number of students, 60 students, would come out to 1,200 gallons per day, but then accounting for water savings features, it would be reduced to 960. The DEC's numbers, though, are based on a full-time operation. We're proposing to operate for two hours a day. So, accounting for that, assuming the DEC is only planning on an eight-hour day, and I did look, every daycare in this area operates for a minimum of 10 hours and on average, 12 hours. Assuming only an eight-hour day for the DEC standards, their calculation divided by four would be representative of what can be expected from a two-hour-per-day program. So those DEC numbers would come out to approximately 240 gallons per day. We showed 236 based on actual water usage data. So the numbers are basically identical. What DEC says we would generate, that will be determined at two separate facilities that we do use. And calculating our actual usage, we looked at the 18 months cumulative of data, 12 from one site, 6 from the other. Out of those 18 months, we picked our highest month of usage at either facility, and we held that as our standard. In comparing the existing flows, we looked at the current use there. We again looked at 12 months worth of water usage, and we picked the lowest month. That has left us with an increase less than 200, sorry, 220. Existing usage lowest month was 23. So we end up just below the threshold established by your waiver standard. So we've submitted a request that you consider that information and allow this project to move forward.
How many staff do you have in there? You have 60 students, but what's your staffing levels there?
They are projecting a total of five initially.
Five for 60 kids?
Five staff to interact with the kids. There would be additional administrators, secretaries.
Okay, so how many staff?
Would you, yeah, because it's all to you.
Well, it's not. Per DEC, it is based on a per child. They don't care what staff is.
Do we care in terms of our waiver request? You sure?
I think, I think, I'll just jump in for a second. I didn't realize that the applicant had proceeded to copy it down. And so I did just already spoke with you and before the meeting, and I spoke with Mr. Hassel as well. And that was conclusion in that she recognizes that they provided this information. It's intentionally conservative, although there were some minor persistency. So I copied her on that, so you can proceed. But she is interested in how many staff they are going to be there, not just the staff, but if there's administration there too, just so that all of the information before the board is accurate. You have the exact number of people, the exact gallons per day for actual and DEC, and they get a fully informed decision. So based on that, in summary, she says increase the additional information.
So tonight, we're not going to close the public hearing. We'll keep it open. But in the meantime, we can ask questions of the applicant and if anybody from the public wants to speak, we can go through the whole rhythm.
Definitely. There are people out there here to speak on it. And then John and Natalie will connect and give you the confirmation for it.
Now, John, I haven't looked at the plans, the bigger plans. Do you have landscaping there? Do you have a sprinkler system there? Are you gonna have any additional?
On the exterior, there are no changes proposed.
Okay.
I did find we have 10 total staff numbers.
Okay.
And that would be the same proportion that are at the other two sites that are being monitored.
CJ, trustee Graziano, questions?
Not much questions, Dave. I'm trying to just make sure we have an accurate accounting on this because it's something I want to do, but I want to make sure it's accurate. If it's not, and we do something that's outside the actual code, that can change a lot of things. So I just want to make sure we have the most accurate number. And I realize you're a conservative, I'm a backer, you do everything, and you want to pull that into perspective, which is fair. We've got, we need to pull that in. So again, fundamentally, we're not against that at all. I just want to make sure we're pulling back.
And is there some specific bill you're missing?
I just want to make sure that we're capturing the adults that are in the middle.
On the water usage data, yes, we're not, I heard them even all from when the adults used to, but they have no, they say no.
Because the number's so close, that's why we're asking. The number was 100, and it was 250.
The differentiation, the numbers that we provided have to, by necessity, include the staff for the last 18 months of the same program. So regardless of.
I choose to stand up, so that the village clerk can refer.
I, I, I just see Joseph Hassel.
Me?
Okay. I just see a disconnect in the question. Because the data we provided does not differentiate between students and staff. It includes the totality. So I'm not sure how you can break it up any better than providing the totality of the information already. We can't go back and change the data that we provide and separate between, because as John just said, water flow is independent of whether it's a staff member. But the totality, the aggregate, has to be the same. So once you use the lowest possible from the ongoing and the highest possible, as John did, the fact that it's close is only in the exceptional rule when both of the extremes are at play.
Let me turn. Close, standing over further. What's the staffing level in comparison to what your parents do?
Well, the operation that is the one moving in, that's it. Those people, exactly as is, are coming to the world.
I'm not sure if there was a disconnect there, really. There's a permanent temporary facility.
Where?
The, it's in, where, it's in Harriman?
Yes.
It's in Harriman. Same number of children, same number of staff. And that group is simply going to leave the temporary and move to the permanent. And we have, they have been using that facility for six months. So we have the exact usage for six months that's mostly moving.
That's not clear.
Well, I mean, in this bill, we have written that they're operating on a temporary basis of 33 route 17M.
Picking up a people, it's not as clear as.
Then we apologize. And that's why I was here, this disconnect. Because it seemed that you were looking at different facilities and your staff are not exactly the same.
I'm trying to do a comparison, something that's actually moving.
Right, right. It's not, it's just, it's just a pickup and move.
We initially submitted the planning board the facility that's moving because.
And the problem was that facility only had six months of data. So they said, could you give us more data from another facility? And we're done.
Much clearer. You're clear, but lacking.
That's why, that's why I came out. The check.
That's what's attorney, you know, make one.
Not a big deal. Not a, no.
That's like yesterday to today, the outside is scot. I mean, that's something for the front. You're good? I'm good. Trustee Ferris?
Yeah, I just have a question on the students and the staff. So you said you have about 60 students and 10 staff?
In total, yes.
But you have a facility where you have 80 students and 225 staff.
Correct.
Why is there such a big difference? There are only 20.
The existing facility that we compared the water data to, which is movement, it is the same numbers. We have 50 students currently. We'll be up to 60.
Right.
But the other facility, we can't change the scale of their operation to get the same number of students. As to why there's so many more administrative staff, it's a multi-level office building which uses a small portion of the building to house this program. It's not that the whole building is so.
So those 225 aren't all for the program. It's the building. Building is one meter.
So we did go through the calculations and account for water use for the daycare program and the daycare being used for office staff not associated with the program in proportion based on DEC standards.
Much more confident. Much more comfortable with any of that, the staff. Yeah, I just would have big discrepancies with students and staff. That's my question.
Okay. Trustee Suriello?
I'm good.
Just one thing I want to clarify. So I know during the planning board process, you had mentioned that you were gonna have 50 students. Now you're at 60, and you're saying that you'll eventually be at 75.
When we started with the planning board, we initially proposed with an expansion of up to 75.
Okay.
Two 75.
Two 75, yes. I, I.
All of our other, all of our other potential impacts, traffic related, as far as buses coming to the site, et cetera, were based upon the future maximum of 75. The process has taken a little bit longer than Thomas Pick has anticipated. So they opened up six months ago in Harriman with 50 kids. Since then, it has, you know, we had anticipated them growing to a bigger, larger number, and they have added eight students since then. But we are perfectly fine with the 60 cap until such time as the water issues are resolved.
Which planning board indicated that they would put as a condition on the cycle?
Yeah. Okay. I don't think we have any other questions from the board. What I'm going to do is ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this application. What we are gonna do, John, is I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep holding public hearing over to our next meeting. And that'll give, hopefully, our consultants from H2M a little bit more time to do the due diligence. And then on the 20 seconds, you'll be back here once again. And that's when we'll.
Okay.
Put aside on there. So, anyone wishing to speak on this application? Only once?
No.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Can I stand?
You want to stand? You're a person?
Person.
Yeah, go ahead. Lisa, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hines, part of the Plenestart Community Task Force. And so I did have. have a question as to the type of children, what kind of a school, I'm sorry, I'm late to the.
It's an indoor school program, it's primarily going to be for handicapped children.
For handicapped children. And isn't the location currently a junkyard?
Well, it was for a long time ago, when this process started, it was a, I don't know if that, well, a junkyard, but it was a facility that was not, what's the term? Not big enough.
Was this not per zone?
Not, no.
Okay.
Okay. It's being changed from a, outside of.
Water salvage?
No, 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 I'm talking about, from a not permitted use to a permitted use.
Okay.
So, through the process, planning board required, likely so, all environmental stuff.
That was my answer.
There was all sorts of cleanups, DDC has now signed off on it. We've gone a year and a half of satisfying DDC, satisfying planning board. Planning board also required us to put a water main down to bring in the fire hydrant, that's all been done, and the current owner has had to occur all this cleanup to get this thing sold to HAMASPIC. So at this point in time, it's also becoming somewhat of a economic burden, but the burden is what is created because we were fulfilling the requirements of DDC and the environmental issues, and that's all been done inside of.
That was, I just thought that it was, it looked like a head salvage, and I was just wondering.
That was an issue that was brought up over and over and over again at the planning board.
Thank you.
Something you wanted to add, CJ? Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on this? So can I now get a motion in a second to hold over the public hearing for meeting of June twenty-second?
Motion.
All in favor?
May I discuss?
Sure.
I'm ready to go now, if you want to do that.
You're ready to go now? I think I can relate, because now that you get back to do the due diligence and come back to us at the meeting. I mean, it's going to be the pylon that next meeting where there's, I think, five or six public hearings?
The way they explain, the way they explain on five, so I'm ready to go now.
I would just wait till now that he's back, so, which should be, let me see, should be by the either Monday or Tuesday next week?
Yeah. I put it on the email to John as another.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. I'd rather just do it now.
Say now?
Yes, say now. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for my favorite part of the program and why I won my favorite jacket, our annual reorganization meeting, starting from the top. Can I have a motion in a second to appoint the following consultants for fiscal year twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four, engineers for the village, H2N architects? What's that? Intern? Intern. Oh, you added intern. Okay. Intern? Engineer for the, H2N architects, attorney for the village, Norton and Torrey LLP, planner for the village, Nelson and Paul from Boardhouse, attorney for the ZBA, Norton and Torrey LLP. So can I have a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion in a second to authorize H2N architects and engineering as the interim engineer for the village, applications to all regulatory agencies as required on behalf of the village of Woodbury in fiscal year twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four, those projects qualified for the village.
Motion.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I, the mayor, appoint Tara Burek as deputy mayor for the village of Woodbury. Membership of state associations, motion in a second please to authorize the village clerk to enroll the village as members of the New York State Conference of Mayors, the Orange County Association of Towns, Villages and Cities, the Orange County Municipal Planning Federation, Orange County Water Authority of Woodbury, and Woodbury Chamber of Commerce. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion in a second to designate the time to record as the official paper for the village of Woodbury.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion in a second to adopt the investment policy of the village as presented at the end of these minutes on our website.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, board liaisons, liaison to town board, me, Mayor Jack Maza, liaison to planning board, Trustee Suriel and Trustee Graziano, liaison to zoning board, Trustee Burek and Trustee Ferrelli, liaison to fire department, Trustee Burek and Trustee Ferrelli, liaison to the water sewer department, Trustee Graziano.
Correct.
Yeah. Liaison to the highway department, Trustee Burek and Trustee Suriel, liaison to the Planning Board Task Force, Trustee Suriel and Trustee Burek, liaison to land preservation comp plan review, Trustee Burek and Trustee Graziano, liaison to Monroe Woodbury School District is Trustee Suriel, liaison to Cuomo School District is Mayor Jack Maza. Oh, liaison to the building department, Trustee Ferrelli and Trustee Graziano. So can I have a motion in a second to establish those liaisons as, right?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion in a second? Ah, damn, this is not age. Ooh. Okay, I'll come back to that. All right. Well, I think, hold on a second. All right, and a motion in a second to establish the mileage reimbursement food cycle planned for members of the village government and its employees. Second? I'll be the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and a motion in a second to reverse police not the one that fifty dollars per day for food purchase while attending a board food conference meeting, that is held for the entire day and is village-related.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for the public that does not include apple. I know you were asking originally. All right, motion in a second please to appoint Chris Gerber to the planning board for a term to expire May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Motion, 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 and one more, another motion.
Second, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion in a second now to appoint Beverly Silveira to the position of zoning board appeals, her term expires on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion in a second to appoint the following individuals to the following positions, appeals officers for coins, Mawah, procurement officer, Mawah, and village clerk, Poppin, primary business officer, Mawah, fire police captain, Scott Danielson, fire police, Dennis Kenny, Chris Salvo, and Charles Newton. And planning board chairperson will be Chris Gerber, zoning board appeals chairperson will be Craig Corrie. I have a motion in a second to approve those as directed.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting dates, a motion in a second to adopt the following meeting procedures, that the village hold regular meetings on a second, fourth, Thursday of each month at seven thirty PM, right here at village hall, if canceled, notification will be given to the media and posted on the official signboard of the village clerk. Special meetings to be called by the name and all trustees will be notified, a telephone at the time now, in person, or by postal service. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, motion in a second please to adopt the following procedure we follow during all public comment segments of our meetings. All of may speak only during public comment or at any time the village board permits for a period of five minutes. Time cannot be yielded to other members of public. Comments are to be made to the village board only, not other members of public or individual board members. Speakers will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste when addressing the board and making comments. Written communication will be accepted, presented to the village clerk. Any deviation from these procedures must be determined by the village board. Motion in a second please?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion in a second to adopt the procurement policy as listed on our website and on the end of these village minutes. Motion. Second. Second. Anybody awake?
Yeah, second.
Oh, okay, you were second.
That's right, well, you said two.
All in favor?
Aye.
And two more, and that's it. This policy that we just adopted shall be reviewed annually by the village board trustees at its organizational meeting or assumed thereafter as its reasonably practical. All right, forget that. Motion in a second to adopt the twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four fee schedule as presented in our village website?
And.
And was changed.
So at the request of Chairman Gerber, under planning board fees, we are, I wonder how we were worded, but the informal works of the parents is going to be free now, something?
Yeah.
Instead of what was there, and I don't remember how to call it.
I thought he requested that was true.
Yes.
He thought he.
I thought, well, here's my thinking, we don't really usually use that at all, that's Chris's decision, but I thought it was best to keep something in there.
It needs to be allowed at that.
Exactly.
Okay.
So plus, as much as we would like Chris to be here forever, I'm sure that he's got a life and he's got children someplace.
Okay.
If that sounds right. Okay. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt the fee schedule as amended?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Yeah, okay, reasonable?
I still not happy with the way that the water rates are, we're going to have to go back.
Okay. So for right now, we adopt it, and then we come back to the water rates. Okay, that ends our reordering. I know, that's what I said. Okay, motion in a second, moving on to administrative business, motion in a second to accept proceedings minutes of the meeting held on May twenty-fifth, twenty-two, three.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
George Popkin, we can read abstract one.
Abstract one, including batteries, twenty-three, twenty-four, zero-zero, zero-one, your twenty-three, twenty-four, zero-zero, five-seven, total six hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Now please have a motion in a second now to adopt or to approve abstract one, is ready?
Motion.
Sorry.
All in favor? All right, my favorite part of the program for to authorize me to sign some. All right, can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a agreement with AHE Engineering for the project Country Forests Communitarian Installation?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we see the bid, Trotterwell twelve construction. So a bid opening was held on May thirty-first, twenty-two, three, at two PM for construction of a new well on Trotterwell Road, well number twelve, with no suspension in time for work on May twelve, twenty-two, three, and only one bid was received from Tam Enterprises totaling one, one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. So, since this bid was, was substantially higher than our consultants had anticipated, I am suggesting that we have a motion in a second to reject the bids for start, or the one bid that we received. So can I have a motion in a second to reject the bid that we received?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, can I have a motion in a second to authorize Deseret Poppin, the village clerk, to re-advertise the bids for the construction of well on Trotterwell Road, well twelve?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Trustee Suriel, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving along, can I have say that once, because Trustee Burek is not here? So the hiring of the village engineer, at our meeting on May sixth, the board discussed the hiring of an in-house engineer, which was overwhelmingly in favor of the idea. So the next step after getting board approval was checking the civil service, and the results came back?
There's no list.
There's no list, which means now we can begin to search for hiring the person to add to the village of Woodbury family, so, a warning, when we begin with, do I begin with, do I look into finding a headhunter? Do I want to advertise in the newspaper, social media? I want this to be a priority, and we're trying to bring somebody in as quickly as possible, so, I'm up for any thoughts or suggestions you may have. So go ahead.
Start with anybody, any recommendations that we can interview.
Okay. Anything else? CJ, you got any ideas?
No, I think we should advertise for it, we should look for a licensed professional engineer that will work full-time for us at the village, because I think the amount of projects maybe going on, especially what's going to be happening in the water space, we're going to need the attention of somebody to cover back all these projects and be that, kind of get them moving along in the direction, I think, and the right direction, get them done expediently, I think, is the good idea.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the, that's the key word, is just moving things along quicker, because as I like to say, municipal government moves like a turtle with four broken appendages and a horrible addiction to whatever, but in any case, if civil service does produce a list with names on that list, we would have to draw from that, make those, that names on that list, whoever we hire would have to be reachable, which is the key word, and take the test and be reachable, so I will begin the process of searching high and low for somebody. All right, the business, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement renewal with CDB Jupiter Home. All right, so I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as presented, to renew, renew and end your executive three-year cooperation agreement with county of Orange and the village of Woodbury, participating in Orange County Community Development Lock Rank Program, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions Rank Program for fiscal, federal fiscal years twenty-two, four, twenty-two, five, and twenty-two, six, and successive three-year qualification periods, pursuant to Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, the Cranston Gonzalez National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended, subtitle B of type four, the McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistance Act of nineteen eighty-seven as amended, and that's it, that's the mouthful. Motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of sale of village-owned real property UTC, UT dash C parcel, two-five-four-one dash twenty-three. So, Woodbury Junction, WP three has approached the village board about transferring a utility parcel that they had transferred to us not too long ago in WP three, in order to build a exile substation, I guess is the best way to put it. What we are waiting on, we, the board has discussed it, we're okay with it, but. We're okay with it, but what we don't have back in from the tax assessor is just.
The mid-set value.
Resess out. So that's the only thing I need, that's the only thing basically holding that up. So I'm hoping to have that also by Tuesday, and in which case we will, we can't approve without that number, correct?
Right, yeah. Connect for the other side to the loan person and you can wear surplus itself or a specific amount that's considered very, very valid.
Okay, so hopefully on the meeting of the twenty-second.
The one.
Excellent. Okay. Alright. Introducing Local Law Three of twenty-four, twenty-three, water billing schedule, actually not three, thirteen. Yes, thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, water billing schedule. Alright, can I have a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law thirteen of twenty twenty-four amended in chapter two, nine, eight, water? The village vote to amend the billing schedule for water bills and triannually quarterly.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Alright, skipping right through, there's no secret action required.
There's a no?
There's a no.
Why is it a no? Is there a reason why we have one?
Um, it's just too, we'd be too expensive, we couldn't be lost if that is, it would be just too much work involved with it, and I would have to definitely outsource it out to outside sources.
We, we have people still paying their February bill today. People aren't paying their bill within the timeframe that they're supposed to be paying, so to go monthly, the postage alone will, will. Well, it's three times a year, so go monthly, that's twelve times a year, so that's four times more than then, right? And.
Is it possible to go to, do a campaign for online?
Like people do online.
We do, nobody takes advantage of it.
We have online.
Very few people take advantage of it.
No, no, I mean, the bill coming to you, like opt-in to your bill to come online.
Like, is that? You'd have to see if Mickey's program can have it, but I have, the, the, the workflow is insane to go, to go monthly, it's absolute. The guys have to go out and read them, read the leaders, so you gotta, another, you get to hire a guy, you gotta bring him to it three times a year. The postage, the paper, people coming in, people trying to who's paying what, and how much anyone owes now and doesn't owe that either. And a third of your, of your people aren't paying at all, and they want it on, on their property tax though.
So this was.
A third of your collection does not pay their bill.
It's like, oh, was the.
I think they were paying more frequently if the bill was small, when they could have programmed it in a more manageable template, more, more monthly for bill laws.
This is never.
Yeah, we've never, we've never had it weekly here, we've had it quarterly?
Yeah, it used to be quarterly.
We've had it quarterly, and then previous administrations moved it to triannually, I guess as cost-saving measure?
So it used to be once, twice a year.
Okay.
And it used to be twice a year, and then.
Yes.
They were running out of money, so it went quarterly. And then to save money, it went three times a year because it was, the money was coming in, so we didn't need to have it done quarterly.
So some of that's not paying, the consequence is that.
Get to put on their taxes.
Their taxes.
And that's how I look at it, because I guess it's being a part of the mortgage. And we thought, I, you know, we thought, I, I really thought when you increased the rates, that was gonna cause a lot more people paying, it's not, it's still hurting.
Late fee, which I thought was, it wasn't a punishment, I thought it was an incentive to pay the bills on time, and it just not, has not worked out that way. I think there's been a, an uptick in the amount of bill, you know, bill is paid, but it hasn't been substantial bill paying that I thought was gonna be the case. So we're not getting, the, the money is not flowing in the way we thought it would flow there. The other, the other advantage, and I know we're talking about monthly or quarterly, but quarterly actually will help in terms of somebody who has leak will be able to kind of identify that sooner, if there's a problem with.
It'll change your margins.
It'll run a bit.
I guess we'll have. Revival, but I think it would be the same issue.
Same issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if your, if your, if your goal is to try to get people to pay their bill, I don't know if Mickey's program can do it, maybe after the month, like, so right now, we're doing it three times a year, so. Same before the June election, now maybe July third, if his program runs out of postcards, everybody not paid, same, just reminder your water bill's past due now.
I think the goal was to make, the goal was to make the bill smaller, so that it'll be more manageable, people have to think about four-month, what that time.
And people will be more likely to auto-pay bills if they're gonna be a predictable amount, whereas if you're billing on a four-month basis, depending on what you use, if you're not really paying it, you have no idea what your bill is gonna be in four months, you can pay. My bill has been so different from winter to summer. That putting it on auto-payment, you know, unless you keep a good amount of money on reserve in your checking account, you can really get caught on the auto-payment in the summer because it's such a, it can be such a big bill. So I, I, you gotta break, break them down to smaller chunks. It's much more predictable and it's a lot easier for people to understand and make people pay. People don't understand that the water bill, if you divide it by four, that's a normal, if you look at that in comparison areas around us, what we're doing, it's a normal reason to order. But people are getting this one bill and it's four months big, and they don't understand it, because it, it just looks like I got a water bill, and they equate that automatically to their gas and electric bills, which they get monthly, okay, or every other utility they have is monthly. So they're equating those bills to the same frequency, and it's so much larger, and it looks like it's a gigantic number, but it's not. Because you, it's, it's being billed in four-month increments. It, it's just a, it's a weird number, first of all, I've never in like thirty-five years of doing this, never seen anybody do it this way.
Try it?
No.
We only went that way because we were trying to save money on postage and printout.
That's how desperate that water was.
If we want.
But you've kind of, you build that into your rates as part of the cost of doing business, it's not a huge amount of money, it's not like you're gonna lose money.
Well, like I said, the issue is.
I have a sound difference in the way we do this.
The whole monthly system, I'm gonna have to hire more staff there, it is just gonna be a bill, you're gonna need a billing clerk there just on that one.
You're gonna need probably at least a part-time person in the department to do all the printing on the water. Another part-time person in my office to be dedicated just for collection, probably a full-time person in the department to do all the reading.
What would probably be most cost-effective, if we ever went to a monthly billing, is to outsource the bill. Just do the readings, send and file off to a billing company, they bill, and then they're, they do everything, they bill, they mail, they do everything, they use vault rate, they don't have to print it, they don't have to, if you add a stamp, it's all vault rate.
We use vault.
And, you know, it's, I don't know, whatever we pay, two dollars a bill or whatever, it's something to bill, to, to do all of it, a good price.
What about, what about the receiving?
Of course.
Do they do the receiving also, or just the billing?
They, and all the money comes in, and unless they send a check directly to us and all goes to a automatic lockbox, then it's, it goes to bank. They're paying it on, on the bill, so if paid to this, it'll automatically go to bank into lockbox, and then my bank is transferred over, it's not that difficult to bill. It just takes them setting up. But again, you gotta, I just have this split, no, it's not the difference.
So right now, what I'd like to do is just move this into a quarterly billing, if we wanted to investigate going to a monthly billing, but what that would cost, what that, what that looks like, we can look into that further. I just think it's going to be, I, I just, I, I think it's gonna be cost prohibitive, and I think it's also just gonna be a administrative nightmare in terms of.
I'm not saying it's, it's, yeah, more work. I'm not saying it's not more work, I'm not saying, it may not be work we wanna do, but again, it should be, it's the best use of our village's voice, and it may not be, you know, you have companies that, that bill millions of bills a day, that's their job.
So if you went to a monthly water bill, but with the minimum water, I think, I'd suggest.
If you take the average bill and divide it, your average bill would be about sixty bucks a month, the average I did today.
But that's not, I'm sorry CJ, but my water bill's twenty-five dollars every four months, I'm paying seventy-five dollars a year, and I can serve, so why should I?
It's not, you may not go there, what I'm saying is, if people get a thousand-dollar water bill in the summer and a thirty-dollar water bill in the winter, they average out the rest of everybody, it'd be a smaller bill each month, your bill may be ten dollars a month.
So that's a hundred and twenty.
Whatever, a year.
I know that, but I can serve, people who can serve with the minimum water bill, who are conserving like they're supposed to, get penalized because of those that are not conserving.
No, you won't pay it die more. Directly, it's just what you pay divided by twelve, it doesn't make, it doesn't change the rate. It doesn't change the actual unit cost.
Sending their bill for four bucks, you know what I'm saying? And I don't think she is the rarity in terms of the water, my water bill is forty dollars, and it shouldn't be there. That's true, but forty dollars sort of be.
But I'm just saying, I took the average, it's not every individual case, but I took the average there, but everybody's paid over the last, over the last year of the new way we did the new rates, and the average will be about sixty bucks a person, which is normal for a monthly water bill, we look at everybody else's rates, it's a normal rate. It's not out of order, it's between, depending on what you're doing, somewhere between sixty to a hundred dollars a month is a normal water bill, at least I.
Let's do this, I got a motion in a second already. We kind of approved it to move it forward.
Yeah, yeah, you voted already, I just said no, and we had.
My, my promise to you, as a captain gentleman, is I will look into monthly billing or what that will look like, possibly, for the village of Woodbury and the water really, okay? And I mean.
Yeah, no, if you did, we'll keep going, and if somebody soon on the start of discussion, okay?
Well, I think you have, when you look at that, you have to look at cash flow that they'll have.
Yes.
And if you'll have more cash flow, that you'll be able to turn and invest, so that would cost.
You have more cash flow.
And when you're doing it now, you're working, because your bills are now smaller.
Comes in faster.
Comes in very soon.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Alright. And I'm moving right along. We got. So there's no secret action required on this local law. And I have a motion in a second now to refer introductory local law thirteen of, to the board, wastewater administrator and the village treasurer for comments. Can I get a motion in a second? Anybody? Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
We have a motion in a second, the schedule up here, to be held at what date?
Twenty-second.
June twenty-second, and to have a public comment on introductory local law thirteen of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
That means June twenty-second, if you're attending, you have to bring Danish or some kind of.
A chocolate home banker.
Yes.
CJ, you vote no on the public hearing, too?
Well, I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm not, I said my views, go ahead, I'll hear your, I'll hear your way, let the public say their views.
Okay, so you're okay with the public here?
Everything with the public, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, finally, finally, last item, and then we go to public comments. We're gonna reschedule the public hearing for introductory local law one of twenty twenty-three, uh, which is entitled short-term rentals. Seeing we have multiple public hearings for our next meeting and to give our consultants more time to amend the social law, and I now have a motion in a second to reschedule the, uh, or to reschedule the public hearing on introductory local law one twenty twenty-three from June twenty-second to July thirteenth. Motion, second. All in favor? Alright. That's one of them. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes regular village business. I know a lot to the public with public comments, starting with the back of the room. Morty, you gotta have something to say.
I just wanna thank you guys.
Go, go, you gotta introduce yourself, now we wanna go, your zodiac sign and everything else like that.
My name is Moi Kellner, I'm a volunteer for the community, trying to help. I'm also a member of the Dazala, and lately it's been our, our response to mutual aid programs, called Mutual Aid, we are covering of Woodbury, Monroe, in Vexito, Goshen, and and we appreciate that, you're taking it serious, that, that garage that we wanna have, should be able to.
I gotta tell you, the, the, the final nail for us, supervisor Ryan was talking about this, was, uh, the events from two weekends ago, Memorial Day weekend, where a two-year-old fell into the pool. Thankfully, her, their, their parents were EMS workers for the fire form. Azala showed that day, Woodbury Community Ambulance, um, Woodbury PD, state troopers, and the fire form were all there on the site. You guys were there on site. And, um, I can't thank you enough, it was, I mean, thankfully, thanks to everybody involved, that, that, that young life was saved. So, um, that to me was worth the discussion on having something locally in W P.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and that's important.
Thank you, Morty. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Maria.
I didn't think we were gonna escape.
For those of you don't know me, Maria Hunter. I've been resident for forty-four years in Woodbury. Um, I don't know what program the water department uses. Have you suggested, we've talked to the village of Harriman, other village villages? I know with our program in Village Harriman, people can get their mail, their bills via emails. And, and, and people use it, people pay online as well, and they know that there's a fee, you know, there's a fee incurred. Check your other villages before you, if I make a final decision, because granted, we are smaller with our billing system versus Woodbury. And I've said this before, I just had a gentleman come in today, I wanna pay my water bill, I said, hold on, I can get you your bill because penalties were assessed on Monday. The thirty-first was the last day, Monday, they gave a great grace period, Monday, they added the late fee onto it. And if that late fee builds another month, they're gonna get another fee, I don't know how you can structure it here, but let me tell you, when they start getting those fees, the first time, the first, because we do it quarterly, every three months, we don't see them again with late fees coming back. So it's just a suggestion to go to other villages to see how their processes, processes are working with that, and, um.
How often do you bill, right?
Excuse me, how often? Three months, every three months, of course, so it's quarterly. Yeah, we have a little printout that, um, you know, I have it on my desk, it tells when the bills are due, when they get checked, um, and we also, I know they put in the system and they used to go door-to-door, where they had the.
The drive-by.
Drive-bys, yeah. So they've expanded, but it's cross-linked.
Do you mail them, or do you eat them?
I don't do the work, but we do have our, our village clerk, she emails them, and she. I do stuff the ambulance, we get them out, and we, you know, what we do, I mean, we do about two boxes full, because we are smaller than you are. And we do the billing. I have water dogs, yeah, and I, I don't have the number of them, but, um, Jane usually takes care of that, but, you know, I'm just secondary to it, but. I don't know. It might be the worst trial before you make a final decision. Um, with the ambulance, I've been, I was a member for seventeen years, Woodbury has great people, and we always welcome our neighboring communities who do help us, so thank you for helping, and I know for a fact everyone is hurting, and when people can, other villages and towns can offer the assistance, thank you. And I wanna thank everyone again, the parade went off well.
Thought that. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Anything?
Yes, reportedly George, uh, water, what's being done to.
You have to say your name.
I'm here.
Morty.
You're not ready.
Oh, you gotta, no, 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 stay there, stay there, Morty, no, stay, stay.
I mean, any question, just say your name, so it doesn't like you're right.
Say your name again.
To George.
Okay. Yeah, fire away.
The water, George. What's being done to radio? I'm going here for years here, and don't stop. We still have the same facilities, I would assume, I don't know.
We, well, that's the issue. We have the same facilities, but that's why we discussed the well twelve, we have well eleven in development, and then we've also got a third well that we are working on right now, it's kind of like the beginning stages, where we're just trying to acquire the land, and then we are thinking that once well twelve goes online, things will improve. Once well, the second well goes online, things will be much, much, much better, and by the time the third well goes online, we will never have this, hopefully not our water. We're also deciding.
I'll give you, I'll give you a really succinct and really simple answer. We are twelve years behind where we should be.
Alright, I agree with you.
And I will play you that one hundred percent honesty here. All of that thing behind where we should be, we've worked really hard the last three years to fix twelve years' worth of water issues. It's not a fast process. I apologize for that, but it's not. It's one of the slowest processes known to man is to get permitting for the water because it's the only utility we ingest. So the permitting board is, other than nuclear regulatory agency, there's no other permitting at all. That's hard to get through the water. So we're working out, we have three wells in development. They're all at different stages. We just, one is ready to go and that's what we were doing tonight is to get another bid in for it to become a little more economical. We're looking at the bids. There's another one right behind it and there's a third one coming behind that that we're looking at to make...
What's it just here?
No. I'm going to talk to you. Hopefully, hopefully the first one should be...
Hopefully the first one. What you do is you space these things. With methods that are trying to address some of the water issues like, well, we have rehabilitation that we've never done. They're on a regular schedule now. Mickey and his group have them on a regular schedule. We've got them funded. So things that are going to continue to improve the water supply, we've put in place. Because what I want to do is regardless, I sit here, I don't sit here. But the one reason I ran through the board was to make it more sustainable where we go from. So that's my, that's the only reason I'm here. And that's why we're trying to continue to do.
Do you need a truck for well on one of the... Trucking thirty-two thousand per se?
There's a much one there, so and then we'll put another one.
And how about storage? Do you do tanks growing up or what we got? Do we have adequate storage?
I would say yes, we have adequate storage, it's, we need, we need bigger supply. That's what we're looking at. And that's why we're putting things like the moratorium, we've stopped building for a while. Just trying to slow down. When you're having a deficit, you don't want to make the hole deeper. So we slowed everything down to catch up the supplies so to kind of fill in the hole.
Is there problems getting water? Any, or driving wells? As I was showing at some time, with, show time where the adequate water runs to the village or the town.
The wells that they're, we're putting in are, I apologize if you missed all the updates with the hydrogeology, but they're very, they're going to be very fruitful. They're very, well, they're great wells. They're good producers. We just think that they're gone, get them online. And we're at the point now that we've got a pool for the first one finally through the state. So now we can bin it out and get a bill.
Will we get one this year?
Hopefully we get one this year, yes.
Public rent director?
That's what we're trying to do. And then we get them on a regular program. And then the goal for any water system is, and even municipal private doesn't matter, is to stay ahead of growth. So what you want to do is want to promote growth, but you want to stay, keep your supply.
Like I understand that, right?
Until everybody gets, so the water becomes sustainable.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Gordon's my brother-in-law, I just wanted to continue.
Yeah, we can't, we can't just put Gordon Sunlaw on the mix. Your name is...
No, my name is Clifford Galan, G U A L A N L. I live in Valley Forge, in this town. It's about my hairline.
You went a little too fast for me, sir. And there's an echo in here, so I'm difficult to hear you speak.
I'm sorry. G U A L A N O.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, just to follow up on what you were saying, Gordon. You're hoping to have a well this year? Is, what's your estimates for the other wells, a year, two year, five year, ten year?
We should be able to one a year.
One year?
If we get them on right.
Are we looking at the current imposed restrictions being lifted this year?
Because I can't ask, answer that. If we get some rain, I'm confident, probably, or I don't know, it depends on rainfall. Rainfall, the lack of rainfall this early in the year is really strange. It just stopped raining. And if you remember, I did this last year, I think in July.
Right, because we've never, we've never had water restrictions in May.
Last year did rain from July to October. It just never rained for some bizarre reason for those months. This year it stopped raining in the beginning of May and doesn't make sense. Not in June, whatever, we've got six sprinklers. And sometimes we've got three ounces of water that come down. And hopefully this couple inches coming.
And if this...
And Chris, there was no snow. There was no snow this, and you didn't have that runoff and you didn't have...
No, I, I get you.
Or maybe, because of the dryness and how hot, you mean the main, the main...
So my next question would be, I don't know if it should have come up during the field business or here, but you're considering or it sounds like pretty close to approving this waiver for this construction project to get water. They've torn down the trees on Ninger for Woodbury Junction, which means they're getting ready to go there.
Yeah, but that, that project, that's phase seven of the junction, that was approved back in twenty fifteen?
No, not water.
Twenty oh seven?
Twenty oh seven.
Twenty oh seven. So that was all part of the, was that part of the calculations to begin with for us?
Yeah, that was, and then included in calculations.
That's already calculated, we know that. When you do a calculation...
So those buildings are going to be built and this new project is going to be completed. And they're all going to continue to get the water that we don't have right now. But I lost my front yard last year because I invited by the restrictions. And now I tried planting in the spring and we're in restrictions again, so I can't. I'm losing my yard, I can't wash my house. I understand where you're coming from and what you're saying. But if we can't take care of our own property, then nobody should be getting permits or waivers or anything else to tap into the water supply that we don't have until you guys have gotten to the point that you're trying to get.
Right, and I originally was confused about that April's vote, what we wanted to do tonight for the government. They just relocated. So they're not getting water.
You're talking about two different things, Sujay. He's talking, he's not talking about Manhattan. He's talking about... No, he's not, he's talking about, he's talking about phase seven of...
No, I'm talking about both. Woodbury's, yeah, stage seven, Woodbury Junction. And what you've talked about tonight, which this is the first time I have heard it.
Woodbury Junction was approved years ago. And it's in the calculation, there's a calculation that says what your available supply with what you're using plus what you've already proven in your pipeline.
And all that pointing you right now to over there with the phase seven is just the infrastructure. It's not, the houses are probably not going to be built for some time. They've cleared the land, they're going to, they're going to build everything else, that infrastructure. And that may be the extent of it for right now.
So I hear you. My problem is like protecting the podium right now. Again, the grass will come back, the new value will come back.
No, it don't. It's dirt. I've got weeds. I'm not, I mean, I'm not going to go back. I know where the town is.
The other building, the other building just relocated. So that makes zero difference in the end.
Relocated from where?
It's from Harriman, it's all the same airport, so it doesn't matter. But it's in Harriman, it's at the edge of Harriman, which is in town. We'll be able to build it from there, it doesn't really much matter. Hundred gallons from here, move to the hundred gallons over here, still got a hundred gallons. Doesn't really much matter. That's what I got confused at the beginning, but I got it, once they explained it better, I think that's why I... The light bulb went off, you know, we needed it, we saw it. They're just moving the operation, it's existing, it already, it's already there, just moving.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
My name is Louis Zepel, I live in Wapo. First, I'd like to clarify the local law thirteen, we cannot increase in or decreasing rates? It's just the billing cycles that's being amended?
No, he spoke about billing rates earlier. He had made a suggestion and he wants to renew the billing rates again.
Increase it or decrease it?
Change.
Change in what sense?
Again, it's hard to get into here, right? The fundamental difference in the way I think it should be built, regularly built, a little more complicated way. I don't know, but it's more, it goes straight and deeply out, more overarching.
If you guys call for a public hearing for the public to get their, their opinion, the public should know what's in the law and understand what the changes will be.
The law is not about the rate, the law is just about billing cycle. Like, there's a discussion on the rate.
So it's just about the...
Just about billing cycle. Now, it's much about the billing cycle. The rates, I think we need to review the way that it's worked. I think they're working, they had some unintended consequences.
Can this discussion be part of, now that you guys are reopening the law, can this be part of the discussion?
I don't think it is a real...
No, that, it's not part of, it's not part of the law.
Can it be?
Blah blah blah, the water rates aren't set by the law, so it wouldn't be part of the law.
It would be resolutions?
The water rates are set and the resolution is part of your week schedule.
So we wouldn't be on an agenda or anything, hoping to the public to speak on it? The, the water rates, what do you say?
Not at the public hearing. If, if you wanted to discuss the water rates further, then you would put that as an agenda item for the public to speak on that. The water rates themselves and calculation or whatever isn't something that should be discussed during billing cycle. So that it's clear that they're really two separate topics.
Before we do it, I would be more willing to explain any...
You could do that because some people are very, they're very confused, they're very upset. They got fifteen hundred, two thousand dollar bills, now they jumped all of a sudden. They like to understand it and they'd like to see how we can, I don't know, spread it, do something about it because there was a sudden jump, like, T four hundred percent, it was insane.
And then it should have went down a little.
I mean, this...
If, if that's what I'm trying to say, that's what I was trying to say before is the disparity between summer and winter.
Actually, it wasn't, it was a thousand percent because, because you paid, you paid like fifty, sixty dollars and then you paid fifteen hundred dollars. It was, it was...
Now, correct, now, but again, if you take, this is where I was trying to say before, where in four months, they really screwed this up. You take a four-month water bill for summer and you have a sprinkler system and you water rates. You do radiation, you do all that. A three to four hundred dollar bill a month is not a lot of money. It's comparable to every other bill if you do the same thing. If you do the same thing in any other water system, you're going to make the same bill. If you don't water, you build a seventy, you build sixty, seventy, eight hundred dollars for four months. Because people see that in winter. Your bill, your bill in winter is a hundred dollars for four months. And it's fifteen hundred dollars in the summer, it's going on your rates. That's where the, that's where the, you're throwing money on your front lawn, that's what you're doing.
Some people want, want, they don't mind, they want to invest money in that.
But there's methods to do that where we all, we tend to overwater. Everybody tends to, you don't have to water your rates every day, you don't have to water your rates every other day. There's ways to do that, where people put sprinklers systems in and they set them and they go off every day for an hour, leave zone. And you don't know how many times, like, it annoys me as a water person, that you drive around in the middle of rain and sprinklers on. Because they're out, they're out of, they're out of time and nobody checks, and nobody shuts the door, nobody has the rates, and you find out rain sensor on. And these are the things that people need to do because if you, if people are going to have disregard for resource, then those are the people that should be paying the actual people. And the more you use, the more you should pay. And that's, that's called the conservation rate.
As a community, we would like to have a discussion about that. Can we put it on the agenda so people can, because last time it was, it was, I won't say snuck in, but it was, it was a surprise to most of us.
Now, how we build, I have a different vision of how we should build.
I don't know about the rates as well, so...
But the rates themselves are really comparable to everyone else. We were just too old to begin with. The rates didn't change for fifty...
This is not the agenda, so it's not, it's not really, it's, we can, we have, we can have a discussion about it. I'm not sure if this is the right time to do that.
Oh, I was, I missed one.
Okay.
I know we're here, it's a year, and we were, again, twelve years behind or should have been.
That's, that's one of the, you know, the other rates. Moratorium is one thing, and what's not, it's the issues.
Because I'll, I'll put, I'll get this all...
Like I said, I don't want to...
But we can do a work session on the water rates. And in that way, it's open, it's, I don't know if it's open to the public, but they can comment.
Yeah, it's probably, maybe it would be open to the public, but I would suggest not on June twenty-second. But maybe just some of the clearly dedicated, maybe to the topic.
So we can do something about it. Where it's a work, a work session that will be into a decision being made that will go on to be a meeting agenda. So we can do that, it can be open to the public. Public can see it. I don't know if we've actually, on very many work sessions, except on the budget. And what people, last thing I'm going to say, and I'll shut up because this is not bad, but the last thing what people need to understand is that rates didn't change that drastically. But wait, we finished, but I understand why. Because the rates now are transparent the way they need to be. Because the water system is now funded by the rate payer. A huge amount of water fundment that's aging in property taxes before. And that, that money is taken out of property taxes and built to the water system and put for right now. The water bills were not all built financially, they were built, a lot of it in your property taxes.
Did I, am I getting a decrease in property taxes this year?
Exactly. Kind of when we did the budget, if you watch the budget here, the water taxes went way down and mitigated what would have been a very large tax increase for other places. The water taxes have gone by a lot, right?
We actually have the, the taxes.
Yeah, oh yeah, your, your water, if you look at your tax bill that just got mailed out, your water charge and your tax bill dramatically...
So that's what I'm trying to say is nobody saw where to build what you were paying for water. Because technically, you could make a choice, saying, I want to conserve waters because this is what's possible, it isn't your taxes.
It'd be beneficial for everyone if all this can be explained to the public. What, this wasn't, this wasn't explained?
That's why I wanted to try to, you asked a question, I'm trying to explain it. And that's where you need it to be. Because you think about a water system, you have to make sure that people who are funding the water system are using the water system. So it's in people's property taxes, you have a private well, why are you funding the water system? If you don't, if you're not on the water system.
That's true, that's, that's true.
So it should be completely funded by those who use the system. And if people can use the system, the way you're working on, on a conservation kind of basis is the more you use, the higher the rate goes. But where you set those blocks is the consideration. That's why the fundamental difference, and that's why we're going to do that all the way. And spread it out over you. I have ideas. Do you want to go here or do you want to go down?
On a lighter note, we, I would like personally to thank the board for considering selling the property to allow us to help the community. Very much appreciate it. As you guys know, Azala's been serving the entire community, all the neighboring towns and villages. I think they're the only ones having medics on twenty-four-hour call and they respond to questions. And having a substation close to the thirty-two, the thruway, it's been for everyone. So we very much appreciate you considering it and doing it in such an expeditious manner. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Zach.
Just to point out, trusty guy, last year, everyone paid about seventy-nine cents for a thousand assessment for water. This year, it is about a hundred cents for a thousand assessment.
This is something we can point out to the public because, because when they go all up in arms, they can understand. If they got a credit somewhere else, then...
You gotta get them to watch some of the meetings.
But it wasn't explained, it wasn't anything, it wasn't explained. It wasn't explained. It wasn't just that.
Okay.
I don't mind explaining it.
But we're on the sustainability topic. Water, it makes me so sad. Anyway, I was here as part of, I was staying as part of the Planet Smart tweeting task force. I wanted to thank our village board, they've been working with us diligently with all of our projects. I just wanted to update you guys, yeah, I think you may have walked in the front door and saw some native. We've worked with Orange Environmental to create a native garden in the front. So not only will it help with maintaining water, with the roots, it'll be a pollinator garden as it grows. We also were able to plant some pollinator gardens around some of the pop houses. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. Like I said, we were moving forward with the help of the mayor and Tara, who attended our last meeting. Let's see, we currently have a rain barrel sale. So for those people that may want to purchase rain barrels, we're working with Orange County. So the rain barrels, I think you have a flyer at the front door, so they attach to your downstairs. If and when we ever get rain, you could use that through the garden and all that stuff. So if we had them in the day or when, when do we have those huge rainstorms? Do we need a rain? Any people?
Yeah, info.
Everyone?
Society's in Florida.
Yeah, so we could have been storing some of that to at least be able to water your garden. Let's see, we're working with Sarah Johnson through the library to come up with more programming regarding open space, uh, excuse me, water conservation and pollinators and some, what was one of them? Can't remember. We're also looking to host a repair cafe for people that don't know what that is. As opposed to throwing an item out, you could bring it to some of the people we've asked to help repair items, which are land pulled down. And then lastly, and I know Rob's not here, we want to speak to him about doing a fall community cleanup in conjunction with another tree planting. We're monitoring the tree at the library and it's doing very well. And so we want to hopefully be able to host another tree planting. That is our... That is our summary.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just thank you, Lisa, just let, tell everybody, when you use a rain barrel, either keep it covered...
Oh, yeah.
Or put a capful of Clorox in it.
So our rain barrels have a cover, right?
Make sure, do the old rain barrel, don't breed mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes, yeah, so there are, there are things, so...
But they can't breed, but then it's a corona, so a capful of Clorox in the water will do the trick.
Right, that or Dawn soap, I thought was the same thing, because they can't break the surface tension.
You could do that, yeah.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? One once, one twice, onto department comments, I have two department heads here, Mickey, anything tonight?
No, I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Michael, Penella, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer.
No comment tonight, Mayor.
No comment, okay, very good. All right, going on to board comments, starting at the end with Trustee Graziano.
I think I've kept here very long enough, so I'm really, really brief. I went off on a tangent, but I just, thank you, Tommy, for coming and the kind words, I, I don't know if you remember, but the, like, basically, the day one of your, when you came on board, you and I were talking down at the rez, when they lit up the first year of the Christmas lights down at the rez, and we had these discussions about working together and, and doing really great things, and I think, on the leadership of you and Andrew, we've been able to do that, and I really appreciate that, and this is the best I've seen things get along here, the entire time I've lived here. So I appreciate Gordon, and the job you guys are doing, and it's, it's spreading around, and, you know, the levity and, and the camaraderie and everything is coming back, and that's something that's really important, I think, to everybody, and was really important, but I decided to do this in the first place, so I thank you, and I thank your team for that as well, so I appreciate it, and that's...
I agree. All right. Thank you, Trustee Graziano. Trustee Pirelli.
I thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank Maria for the parade, it was great.
Yes.
I was well organized, and thank, thank you, looking forward to seeing how you can expand on it for next year. So...
Let's start here.
I can expand it.
I don't want to start it for next year.
I know. So, and we're not expanding around.
Okay.
So, and that's, well, I, and Tommy, thank you, one, it's been a pleasure to see everybody working together, like, like Trustee Graziano said, it does give a good feel-good vibe to everybody to see that, so it was a very good beginning of the evening tonight, so thank you.
And that's it. That was all. Trustee Suriel.
I would also like to thank Maria, she did a fabulous job. Being someone who walks in her shoes and organizes events, things, I know how much work, blood, sweat, and tears it takes, and it was flawless, it went off without a hitch to the point that you were even just directing traffic, okay, you did a fabulous job. With that said, I would like to talk about two other events that are happening locally. Saturday, fingers crossed that the wind changes, we will be, a lot of our local kids will be singing over at Monroe's Got Town at the ponds, it's a kickoff to the summer concert series, Music Boosters will be there, we have a lot of amazing wrap and baskets, including tickets for Dorney Park, Nickelodeon Universe, Legoland, Splashdown, Medieval Times, we have tickets to see Jerry Seinfeld at the Bodega Hotel, we have a lot of very lovely UG bags, we have a lot of wonderful things. Monroe's Village has been very good to us, and allowing us to be the sole organization to fund rates there with our kids singing, so we are very happy about that. And on top of that, on June twenty-second, our kids will be doing Broadway Review, we have a lot of Woodbury kids singing at that, at harm. It'll be outside, you can make reservations online, it's from five to eight o'clock, and we'll be there, I will be there as well, because I have a lot of kids I know singing there, and we'll be there for Music Boosters as well. And thank you, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you, Trustee Suriel. That's very popular, Village Club. Do you have anything?
Everybody who is a Republican that lives in the village of Woodbury will be voting at the Senior Center on June twenty-seven, six a.m. to nine p.m. It's the only place you're voting, only if you're a Republican, only if you live in the village of Woodbury, Senior Center. June twenty-second.
Thank you. So thinking back to when the board, the rest of the board said, I also want to thank Maria Hunter, I thought it was, probably the best parade I've marched in, and I've been a trustee for the last few years now, so this is not my first rodeo. It was a pleasure marching with the town supervisor, we also had Congressman Ryan, who was with us. I gotta tell you, we were talking to Maria about this, we didn't know if we've ever had Congressman Walker parade route, and he was there for most of that parade route, along with Assemblyman Echus, and then the State Senator, and the group of us up at the monument there, so it was wonderful, you did a great job, I spoke to you nine before, you were all nervous about it, nothing to be nervous about, it went off without a hitch. So, wonderful job of that. I just want to announce, and actually, since Maria's here with the Chamber of Commerce, so I had the pleasure of meeting with Jonathan Swiller for the Woodbury Community Ambulance, and Tim Fittington from our fire department, to go over the next set of incentives for our community ambulance people and a firefighting personnel, which would involve local businesses. I've produced a letter to go out to the local businesses, but I'm gonna probably need the assistance of, of the Chamber of Commerce to get to local businesses. The idea would be that if Saint John Kelle walks into Jay's Deli, and he shows him his, whatever card you get, your identification card, that there would be a discount involved with that. So we think it's, it's another incentive, and there's never enough incentives for our volunteers, but it is a starting, another starting point, so whatever help the Chamber can offer with that would be appreciated, considering that Jonathan Swiller is not the young man that he once was. So, that being said, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, I want to thank town supervisor, this, listen, so everybody knows, the supervisor I always call it, but we've got an opportunity here with this project to do something on a very large scale. I mean, we spoke this morning when somebody resident in there had two hours, but they had no power. So there's always conversation going on, but this is really the golden opportunity